We'll call the, uh, meeting to order. This is our September fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen council meeting. And if you would, please, uh, stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the honor which it stands, on the mission under God, in indubitable liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Rust?
Dear Lord, thank you for our families and loved ones. Thank you for our friends and pets. Thank you for the United States of America. Thank you for Canton, Georgia. Thank you for all the blessings you have bestowed upon us, and most of all, thank you for you. Your love brings meaning to our lives. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. I'd like to welcome our guest investors here tonight. Uh, we have, uh, an employee recognition, Chief Mitchell.
Mayor, Council, thank you. I always think it's important to, um, either introduce new employees or recognize employees for, uh, accomplishments. And tonight, we have three of our employees that, um, have just been promoted. They were promoted last week. Uh, they received their attention to orders and, uh, will be going through a, a supervisory field training and then, um, out on their own on the shifts, um, uh, leading our, our patrol teams. Um, to my right here, I have, um, Jesse Ray, Corporal Jesse Ray. Um, he has been with the organization, uh, or excuse me, been in law enforcement for almost ten years now and been, been with the organization, I believe it's five plus years. Um, but, uh, he has just made corporal and, uh, we're very proud of him. And to his right is Sergeant James McPherson. He's been in law enforcement for a total of six years, been with the agency now for, uh, I believe over three years. And, uh, we're very proud of him as well. And then to his right is Corporal Mary Turner, uh, who's been with the organization for a little over two years. Um, so we're very proud of her as well. Uh, we always talk about, uh, um, an attitude of service and a mindset of community. And, uh, these three right here exude that, uh, the, that, uh, what we talk about and what we, we, we say we want to build as a cu- culture and organization. They went through a very, uh, tough assessment, um, uh, promoted last week. And, uh, again, we just wanted to, uh, introduce them to you as our newest upcoming leaders in the organization and the future of the Canton Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. We have a proclamation that I would like to read, uh, regarding Constitution Week, which is September the nineteenth to the twenty-third. And I will make this presentation once I read it. Uh, we have some folks here from the DAR who will receive the proclamation. Whereas September the seventeenth, two thousand and sixteen marks the two-hundred-and-twenty-ninth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, providing a historic opportunity for all Americans to remember the achievements of our founding fathers and to reflect on the actions of Americans who, for the past two-hundred-and-twenty-nine years, have defined the words of the Constitution by exercising their rights and responsibilities as citizens. Whereas the Constitution is fundamentally predicated on governance by we the people, making citizens, understanding of the Constitution and its framework, an essential element of the future of our country and the civic health of its populace. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which we will commence the occasion, which will commence the occasion. And whereas public law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September the seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I Jean Hoggood, Mayor of the City of Canton, on behalf of the Daughters of the American Revolution, High Tower Trail Chapter, do hereby proclaim September the seventeenth through the twenty-third, two thousand and sixteen, to be Constitution Week in the City of Canton, and ask that our citizens reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven. Are there any, uh, public announcements to be made at this time? Ms. McGee, do you have any?
I do have a couple. Tonight, there's a reception at the Arts Center for the Mayan Culture Heritage Month. There's a Weaver who is an ambassador for Goodwill who's flown in from Guatemala to do a weaving demonstration this evening at the reception. I believe that's six to eight P M.
And when is that?
Tonight.
Oh, it's tonight.
So we need to hurry.
I've already met, I already met the Weaver this afternoon.
And she's lovely, isn't she?
She gave me a piece of the weaving, which is nice, it's hanging him off, isn't it?
Oh, wonderful, wonderful. This Saturday, we'll be having the dumpster days again. That's been a huge hit, very successful in helping clean up neighborhoods and helping neighbors take care of their yards and, and items that they have trouble getting rid of. And maybe they can't drive to a landfill to get rid of their items. This Saturday, the dumpsters will be here at City Hall from nine to one. This is a concentration of the area of downtown and the streets of, to name a few, Chrislar, Murrell, Roy, Jarvis, Archer, Marietta Hill, and Academy. So thank you very much, and if you live in the area, please bring your things that you need to get rid of, nine to one.
I don't know the details on that one. Uh, the, um, who has it?
I have one.
Ms. Wilson, go ahead.
Saturday is the five K race for A-Day for Reinhardt. It'll be in downtown Canton, and I'm sure they'll be delighted to have you. You can call the Reinhardt Office of Advancement and sign up.
Okay, anyone else? Uh, I would say that, uh, you've probably heard through the media that, uh, uh, the, the Georgia Department of, of, uh, Natural Resources has declared a Level One drought response for fifty-three Georgia counties. You've probably seen it on TV of which city, uh, of which, uh, Cherokee County is one of those. So we need to be aware of our water usage because it has been dry here, no doubt. And we've just had no rain in, in recent times. But they're, they're not saying you can't do a lot. Actually, the things that, uh, a Level One allows for, uh, the example of the following activities may be done at any time of the day under a drought response Level One. Irrigation of personal food gardens, uh, irrigation of a new and replanted, uh, plant, seed, or turf may be done at any time of the day for thirty days after installation. A drip irrigation or irrigation soaking, uh, hoses may be done at any time of the day. And hand watering, uh, with a hose with automatic cutoff or handheld container may be done at any time of the day. The general landscape watering may be done between the hours of four P M. and ten A M. each day. Uh, so, uh, there's, it's not very stringent right now, but, uh, you know, unless we get some rain, it could get even tighter. So think about conservation there. The, uh, ceremonies that die in Minnick with the Upper Edouard River Alliance, uh, spoke of at the last, uh, council meeting, uh, will be held. I think it's, uh, it's, uh, it's a sixth dance tomorrow, the sixteenth, at seven P M. At Edouard River Park. It's a dedication ceremony, um, of the Edouard River Park canoe launch. So anybody interested in that can attend that one. All right, I'll entertain them, uh, before we consider to approve the agenda, I would like to amend, uh, amend the agenda to add an item F. under old business, which would, uh, add the consideration to waive the sign fee for the Fields of Faith organization. Okay? That's been done about every year, but we have to act on it anyway. Fields of Faith, uh, sign fee waiver. Yes?
Do you not want to omit C and D?
Omit what?
August with C and D? Because Texas has sent a letter asking us to...
We do, we, I got to that, but that is correct. They have asked that it, uh, it be postponed. Do we have to vote to postpone it, or do we just amend the agenda? I mean, okay, all right. Well, item C and D, uh, will be, uh, postponed till October at the request of the applicant, which is the annexation and zoning of the corner at Butterworth Road and State Route twenty. Motion, motion to approve the agenda as amended. We have a motion, a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. All right, under the, in, in your agenda package are the, are the minutes from the September the first, uh, uh, two thousand and sixteen public hearing and September first, two thousand and sixteen council min- minutes. Um, the, uh, council minutes, I understand, they have been revised and sent out, uh, to all the council members. Are there any changes or corrections to those that were sent out as revised? Okay, if not, I entertain a motion to approve the, uh, September the first minutes as revised.
Some move.
We have a se- have a motion, a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Okay, we don't have anyone tonight under the ten-minute public input, since we're not talking about fire consolidation, I guess, or something like that. Um, under the consent agenda, I will read those items, uh, A. through, uh, E. And if there are any of those that you would like removed from the consent agenda for further discussion, uh, let me know. Item A, approval of the revised business travel policy. Item B, approval of the ordinance amendment to Canton Development Code CB, uh, Central Business District to allow restaurant with drive-through facility. Item C, approval of the River Green Agreement to settle unused tap fee credits. Item D, approval of non-exclusive easement with State of Georgia Department of Defense, uh, that's, uh, easement for water line over at the Armory. And item E, approval of the creation of a Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Any of those anyone would like remove? Uh, Mr. Grant?
I have a question on, on the revised ordinance on B. And I don't know if I should ask that now, or if we should...
Yeah, ask it now, of course.
Okay, I just, on, um, the revised ordinance, under the conditions, uh, three, said not to be adjacent to residential use. Question I had there is, I know, uh, on the Harris Development that there's a proposed possible Phase Two residential, uh, component possibility. Would that be in conflict with that? Would that be considered adjacent? And then also, we're talking about mixed use, which implies residential. So is that, should that read single-family residential? Or, I know the intent of it, and I, and I agree with the intent, but I'm wondering it, I'm concerned about those two issues. Is, should I be or not?
Councilman Grant, the intent of, uh, that condition was to ensure that, uh, that drive-through facility, the Q line, would be on an opposite side of a building that contained a drive-through for many residential, whether it's, uh, on-site or another part of the four acres or if it's a piece of property, uh, elsewhere. Uh, the master plan that, uh, has been shown, uh, with the drive-through facility would comply with this condition. But if there are other, uh, developments that come in, uh, in the future, uh, with another threat or parcel mixed use, there was a reason for that, uh, restriction.
We'd have master plan review of that.
Yes.
Of the next one anyway, so we could look at that. Okay, thanks.
Do, do you want to take it off?
No, that's, that's the only question I have.
Uh, Mr. Rust?
I just had one comment. I, I think what you're trying to say is adjacent means adjacent. And in this case, I, I kept a copy of this plan. It's definitely on the other side of that four-acre piece, so that's certainly an attempt to not let it be adjacent.
Yeah, you wouldn't want a situation where you've got a commercial building with a drive-through that's right beside a mixed-use building that's got residential upper floor, because that person is going to hear the, the drive-through, you know?
Well, we're, we're going to pains to make sure that the drive-through is, is, uh, controlled access and egress, so certainly that's very important. I agree, thank you.
Any, any other items, uh, for further consideration at all? We have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion for the consent agenda. Under old business, uh, discussion of the status, uh, of the, uh, for the enforcement of the rental property agreement registry, uh, in the Unified Development Code.
We don't have anything to discuss tonight. We, we've discussed this since our last meeting on the staff side. And so when we come to council in October, we're going to have an administrative policy to bring before you, showing how we're going to interact, uh, enact this piece of code and, and enforce it from that point forward.
Okay, any questions about that? All right. Item B, under old business, discussion and possible action in Canton Place and North... I'm sorry, did I miss something?
No, I'm just going to place a...
Oh, I thought I'd lost my place again. Discussion and possible action in Canton Place and Northside Cherokee Hospital Master Sign Plan.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve? We have a second?
Second.
Had a second? Ms. Wilson, you got something else?
Nope.
Okay.
I do, I do.
Okay.
We, we got this piece of paper, uh, email hand delivery, uh, today, that you got today, Ken?
Yes, uh, came in yesterday, I believe.
Okay, but it, I, I think they're just trying to withdraw Phase Two and get us to vote on Phase One.
Phase One plus the, uh...
The change on forty.
Sign at State Route one forty.
One forty. So all we're going to do is delay the, the second phase, which is going to be delayed year...
Correct, is what they have, uh, requested.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Grant?
Yes, and so the documents we got, um, two days ago, that's the sign added to State Route one forty.
Correct.
Um, my comments are that, I mean, the, the sign's very attractive and all, but we had just received this, you know, a... but we had just received this, you know, a day and a half ago. And the council hasn't had a chance to discuss it, you know, as a council, because we didn't see in the work session. And, you know, I do think this is a big deal and an important decision. And I would just, I mean, I would like to have more time that we could discuss as a council and just talk about, you know, what ramifications it has to the future and all. Like I say, I think it's very attractive, but it, you know, to me, it's a lot to kind of take in and consider, you know, at this time. But I wouldn't want a whole lot of time, and I wondered if we could, you know, even have a special session, you know, called session with the development department, but...
It is a massive amount of material. Can you tell me if any of the signs are on right-of-way of the streets?
From this master plan, there's not specific way to determine as to whether they're proposed to be within right-of-way. Within our memorandum to city council was expressed that the signage would have to be outside of the right-of-way. They would have to comply with that or come back to city council.
So you really can't tell from this material the exact location of the signage?
It appears that it's outside of the right-of-way in regards to the numbering sequence that you see in red. For instance, the number one.
I mean, is it showing like ten foot off the right-of-way as...
That could not be determined off of these drawings because of a scale factor. It does appear that on, like I said, the sign number one, which is on page one, if you look very carefully at the line portions that is gray and white, the one inside the red circle does appear to be behind the right-of-way line that's shown for Northside Cherokee...
But would it have to be ten feet off the right-of-way?
In accordance with our sign regulations, yes.
That's with our sign regulations?
Yes.
Okay. I noticed on the information that you had provided, I guess, back at the end of August, the directional signs that are mentioned there, proposed size exceeds the allowed two and a half square feet. And a directional sign of this size would not be allowed in G C. and O I. zoning districts. And also, under the hospital identifier signs, wall signs are permitted in G C. and O I. zoning districts. Businesses are allowed one small sign per road frontage. Northside would be allowed two wall signs due to the property having two road frontages. The third requested wall sign would require a variance in general commercial slash O I. zoning districts. Sign size in terms of square feet is based on the linear length of the front of the building. A business is allowed two square feet of wall sign for each linear foot of building front. Okay? The north elevation wall sign indicates letter height of fifty and three-eighths inch inches. This exceeds the height allowed by two point three-eighths inches and would require a variance. And then, item six under the sign code does not address this particular type, which is emergency room identifiers certainly. And that would be entirely up to the council. The addressed signs on the buildings, which according to, these signs are exempt from permitting requirements as long as they are between four inches and eight inches in height and a minimum stroke width of point five inches. Anything larger would require a variance, but not a permit. The proposed height is thirty-six inches, as opposed to the regulation of four inches and eight inches.
Is that in Phase Two?
Huh?
Is all that in Phase Two or Phase One?
Phase One.
Phase One?
Yeah, that's Phase One. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. The size, and it mentions here, future hospital campus signs are shown as figures F-one, F-fourteen. These signs are shown to be at a definite size in terms of size and height. The additional monument signs are allowed due to there being multiple business buildings on a single lot. These signs would be allowed in G C. and O I. zoning. The size of the sign is based on square footage of the building. The application does not provide the size of the future buildings. So how do you, how would you, maybe not permit, but how would you allow a certain-sized sign if it's based on square footage and yet you didn't know what the square footage was?
The Unified Development Code does allow with a mixed-use master plan development to submit a master sign package with its own sign standards for city council consideration that would not be the same as sign regulations for general commercial office institutional. In regards to the specific question you asked, you could not determine the square footage that would be allowed without knowing what the linear footage of the front wall of buildings would be within Phase Two.
Okay. It says the proposed sign area for each type sign is twenty-seven square feet. That is significantly less than the smallest allowed at a hundred and thirty-two feet. But it could be larger than what would be permitted or might be built there. Is that right, technically? Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
If I'm listening to what the mayor's reading, and I'm wondering if the hospital already has pretty definitive plans to keep going up, so the size of that building in Phase Two will get bigger. If we didn't allow two inches now deviation from our current code, wouldn't they be allowed to put up a bigger sign when the building gets bigger?
No, because the size of the wall signs is based upon the linear footage of the frontage of the building.
Wouldn't the frontage of the building grow when they add four floors?
If you're going up, the width...
Oh, I see, oh, I see. It's not the total width, it's just the, okay, I got you, thank you.
Yeah, you know, I'm sure I don't really have a problem. I've just had a hard time getting my mind around the full scope. I mean, this is awesome, it's massive, and to really see what it is. And one thing I think that we have to try to do, or should do, is to consider what may happen down the road. Are we going to vary our signs to that extent and other, should other developments come in the same way? We've got to be able to treat everybody the same, you know, at least, the best we can, so, but that's the element.
And there again, Mr. Mayor, part of this whole idea that's within the Unified Development Code for the master sign package for these mixed-use master plan developments is to allow city council to consider size signage that would not necessarily meet the sign regulation size, but these larger mixed-use master plan developments, because of the size of the developments, the scope of the developments, the scale of the buildings themselves might lend itself to something other than what's contained within sign regulations.
But what?
By that means, city council has way to look at sign packages on these master plan developments on a case-by-case basis.
So while we may allow one entity to have a much bigger sign than another entity, is what you're saying? It's just strictly up to us, basically, it's just whatever we want to do.
City council approved signage for Canton Marketplace. It was larger than what the sign regulations would have allowed at the time that Canton Marketplace was built. Riverstone Shopping Center was allowed monument signage that was larger than what the sign regulations would have allowed for general commercial.
Why don't we change our regulations? If this keeps coming up like this, you know, I mean, what good are the regulations, actually? I mean, why aren't we telling some, you can do this, some you can't do this? That's the only thing, kind of, kind of...
And it gets to the scale and size of the development. And that's something if city council wants the staff to look into. We can certainly look into amendments to the sign regulations to look at some of these factors in regards to size and scope of developments, mixed-use developments, things of that nature, so that there is a little bit of variety within what's allowed.
I realize this is a little bit different, but somehow I know that I feel like one business, a smaller business ought to be able to advertise a sign the same as a bigger business, you know, under the same guidelines, square footage or whatever the building is, you know. But that's just me. Mr. Grant?
You know, I welcome our sign ordinances. I think we've done a very good job of controlling our signage throughout the city. And I know a lot of surrounding cities haven't done such a great job, so I think we've done that. And I understand the case-by-case and the master plan according to scale. I mean, that all makes sense to me. I think what's different here is the scale is massive. And there is a lot of detail, and it makes sense to me, and especially the hospital and the directional signs. I know that needs to be different. I understand that. I just want to make sure we all understand the details of what we're doing here. And I know we talked about the, you know, adding the Canton Place sign to that Phase One. But now that I'm looking at it visually, it's a very different sign, because it is for, you know, the commercial development versus, you know, the hospital wayfinding and all. And I don't, I don't feel comfortable considering those together necessarily now that I see that, because it's very different. While I understand the hospital signage, the wayfinding needs to be different, the emergency signage and all that, the wayfinding needs to be different. And I was under the impression that the signage at one forty primarily would be identified with the hospitals down here, and it almost seems secondary on that sign. So that's what I'm kind of struggling with right now, just kind of understanding the scale and the details.
The sign at one forty in the amendment letter, if you look at it closely, on the eight and a half by eleven, it doesn't show up. But that does reflect a portion of that signage being dedicated for Canton Marketplace. It also does reflect welcome to the city of Canton within that overall sign. But certainly, you know, city council does not want to approve that at this point in time. Have discussions, think about it. Your decision. I'm here to answer questions as best I can.
Please, Mr. Pepper.
One thing that I might suggest, I know that the topic came up, at least from Northside, that, you know, as you're going on Highway twenty eastward, you know, they would like to have some signage in conjunction with Canton Marketplace that shows what's on that Boulevard.
Sure.
And likewise, that's what they've tried to accommodate on this end, is giving a nod of the head to Canton Marketplace from one forty and giving a nod of the head to the hospital from twenty as you go southward. The one thing I would make is a suggestion, though, on this sign on one forty, actually, there's two things. You've got the piece that's an optional sculpture. And sculpture and art's one of those things that's very difficult to approve as it relates to a sign, because everybody's idea of art is very different. And that may be a piece that's a little bit hard to approve as part of the package. The other thing is, if, and I appreciate them doing this and placing that section on the sign that says, "Welcome to Canton," specifically, if that's a gateway sign for the city, you know, we're going through a branding study right now. We might want the ability to change that lettering to whatever font comes out or anything like that from that standpoint. So I think from that end, we would want to control at least some ownership in that little bit of section of the sign to make sure it matches whatever the city brand is, and that's something that you might want to consider.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I think this is all really great dialogue, and we haven't had the chance to have this dialogue because we just got this two days ago. So that was kind of going back to my first comments, that if we could just have a little bit more time to, or even a short work session to go into the details, but...
Mr. Rust?
I'd like to make a motion to delay this to the work session. And then vote on it in a month.
Yeah, or even sooner. I think we could, if it needed to be done, we could certainly meet sooner than that if we had to.
I realize that Joe Allen has a motion on the floor, but according to your partner, Jeff, we can do that.
A delay's a subsidiary, so you can entertain it first.
Yeah, so we can delay, we can vote on the delay first, if someone's second, they give a second on the motion?
Second. Do we, is there any other discussion about that?
I just think, why don't we wait a little bit? It's such an important decision that we just want to get it right for the city and for Northside. And if it delays it a month, it probably isn't going to change anything they have to do. We want to approve this, but we want to approve it right for both the city and for Northside, so maybe...
It's mine.
Pardon?
Go ahead, Councilman Rust.
No, no, go ahead.
It's my understanding that Northside would prefer if city council would consider a called meeting of some sort the first Thursday in October is going to put them behind with construction and signage, is what they've indicated to me just now.
Are you saying that we'd need to make a decision by the first of October?
Well, they want a special call meeting, so we can do it faster.
Well, the first, okay, the...
Yeah, we got a long period.
When is the first meeting, October the sixth, seventh?
First, the first is a Friday.
As a clarification, on that being a subsidiary motion, you have to table it to a specific date. You can't just table it to...
I did, I did. I want to go to the work session and vote a month from now.
That is October the sixth, the first Thursday.
Is that where you want to go?
Well, based on the fact, you just got that information from Northside, they came up to tell you
Correct.
that that's a problem for them. I just don't know what we can do, because it seems like members of the council want a delay. So I'm not sure, if the motion doesn't pass, then we go back to a vote with Joe Allen, so...
Okay, any other discussion? The motion is that we postpone until our work session. Is that, are we considering that at a point that we could also make a decision if we chose to do so at that point, at that night? I would assume we could do that anyway, right? Mr. Pepper?
Can I ask a question? Is the concern from the council just about the gateway sign versus the internal signage?
Well, I'm listening to Councilman Grant say that there's a lot of data, and we haven't had enough time to really look at it. And I really respect his opinion, so I would like to have him have a little more time. If he can do that between now and, are you going to be here for that first meeting?
I'll be here for the first meeting.
Oh, okay. So if they're asking us to vote immediately after that work session, if we can decide, then we can probably do that. Is that, so my motion, I'll change my motion to work session with a possible action on that issue at the work session. Vote, to vote.
Okay, and you...
Is that good for you?
Is that good for you?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you have something?
I have a question.
Your microphone, your microphone's off.
If we wait until the work session, it creates a problem for them.
There.
Thought it was on. They're saying if we wait to the work session, it creates a problem for them. If we, I just suggest, is the signage on the property the problem? Or would the wayfarer, the one Mr. Grant's speaking about, the wayfarer sign, would delaying till October hurt that one, or is it just the other signs, or what's the situation there?
Was Phase One, which is the internal signs to the hospital, which was talked about at the work session two weeks ago. That's what the urgency is, to approve this amendment with this other sign, the welcoming sign. That's not quite so urgent. So what we're hoping is the Phase One signs, which you've had before, which you've, which we filed with the application back in August, and was what we discussed at the work session two weeks ago, that's what we were hoping would be approved tonight. The other one, we're fine if that waits until... fine if that waits until...
What if we withdrew the, the 140 from being put into Phase One and we could put that in later when it becomes more timely?
Yeah.
And then we could vote perhaps on what was originally presented to us.
Yes.
But for the fact that Phase Two was pulled out of it. So that's easy. It's pulled out.
Yeah, that would be fine.
So then, then really we're basically getting the paperwork where it originally presented. There's no change.
Correct.
And if we want, if you really need something done on that entry at 140, we can take that up individually. Is that, will that work?
Yes.
So then, do I need a motion and a second to withdraw my motion to delay? I probably do. Jeff, do I need that?
I think that you can withdraw your motion.
I withdraw my motion to delay. Okay.
So you're back to your original, what was the original motion?
Yeah, Joe Allen's, Joe Allen's motion to approve.
To approve the entire...
Well, can you, can you pull that out for, pull that one? She, she has to modify it.
To approve, to approve the, the...
With, with the modification of the 140 being included in Phase One.
I make a motion to approve the Canton Place master signage amendment to the application Phase One.
Okay. Any others?
Is that, are we taking the gateway sign off?
Yeah, they didn't. That motion didn't take it out. Do you want to take that out? Can you take, can you make the motion so that that 140 being entered into Phase One is out of it? Because right now you, you want to prove the 140 sign being in it.
Yes.
You want it to be in it?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not comfortable with the 140 sign, but if we want it to be in it, I mean, I can't vote for it with that gateway sign in there. And I, I do want to say that I, I understand, and, and as, as I said earlier, I understand the hospital sign, the wayfinding sign, the informational signs do needing to be different. And I understand that those are probably on a tighter schedule. I do want to acknowledge however, though, those do have a lot of detail to them. And while the application may have been made in August, we only received that package a few days before our last work session. So we have really not had a lot of time to look at these details. And, and I'm comfortable with those signs, but, you know, it, it, we haven't had the luxury of really, really looking, having the time to really look at all those details. But again, going back to my original concern is, is that those signs are very different, serve a very, very different purpose than the, the entrance gateway sign at 140. So that...
We had a large package that we all reviewed with Northside Cherokee. I asked all the questions I had at that time. And I'm satisfied with what they presented. That's why I didn't want to take anything out of the motion. I want to approve, I, I make a motion we approve it as they've submitted.
Okay, we, we have a motion and a second. We're still in the discussion phase. Mr. Russ?
Yeah, if this motion gets defeated and Joe Allen's gets defeated, I, I'm still free to make a motion to exclude the 140 signage. And we'll see how this plays out. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, we got a couple lights on there. If not, if no other discussion, then I'll entertain a motion to, I'll be now entertain the voting on her motion to approve as, as submitted. Okay? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Okay.
No, go.
Three, three? I will, I would say no. And next, if you want to...
I'd like to make a motion to accept the master plan as presented with the exclusion of the withdrawal, with inclusion of a withdrawal of Phase Two signage plan and withdrawal of the Phase One inclusion of the 140 signage. So that sign will be removed, Phase Two will be removed, and I make a motion we, we, we approve it in that state.
Are you saying approve Phase One?
With, with the fact that the Phase One no longer includes the 140 signage. And Phase, yes, that's exactly right. Yes, thank you. So that's, that's my motion.
Do we have a second? We have a second. Okay. Ken, did you, did you tell me that, I don't know if this is Phase One or Two, but did you tell me that you couldn't tell whether these signs were on or off the right of way?
Yes.
Is that what I understood?
We had had that discussion and I tried to explain that it appears that the signage even within Phase One...
I, I know it may appear that way, but the bottom line is that they're not on the right of way, right? Period. I mean, you can't put a sign on the right of way, can you?
By our sign regulations, no. It appears on the drawings within the master plan that that one sign along Northside Cherokee would be outside of the right of way.
Okay. When you look at it, it looks like it's about as far off as the guardrail there, you know? And I would assume that guardrail is, is on the right of way. But it may just be the way that's been superimposed on there.
I believe that to be the case, Mr. Mayor, we looked at that other drawing that had some topo lines and everything on it. And it had the small red circle with the number one that was on page one. And that showed to be behind the line that I noted as being the right of way line. As to whether that was exactly 10 feet, I could not answer that question off of that 11 by 17. But that does show to be outside of the right of way.
Mr. Grant?
So even in a special master plan approval, regulations still require signage to be off right of way?
There's nothing in this that specifies one way or the other as to whether they want any of the signage within the right of way or not. If they wanted some of it to be within the right of way, that language should have been included within the master plan.
But it's not.
I didn't see it anywhere in that.
Okay. And if it's not, our regulations would not allow it to be in the right of way? Correct?
Correct.
Isn't it county right of way, not city right of way?
No, that's a city right of way.
City right of way?
Yes, that's a, the city may...
Aren't they prohibited from putting it on city right, unless we were to approve it mistakenly, I guess, right? We could give them their, their blessing to do something.
The city accepted all of that street last year.
Okay. Oh, yeah, okay. Okay.
Okay. Any other comments? Do you have something? Okay. Your light's on.
The other one.
The other one. Yeah, that's good. Thank you. Okay, you have the motion to approve, I guess, Phase One as submitted of the master plan sign ordinance. Any other discussion at all, questions? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion. Thank you.
Okay, good. Well, I just, I just want to get it done the right way. It's okay. You got it.
Item C and D were postponed to October meeting, the annexation and the zoning at Mountain Oil Express. Item E, discussion and possible action or committee appointments. I have, I would like to make some nominations and I would like to thank the, the council members that sent names in and made suggestions and actually on these committees, others made them. I would like to have been able to appoint every one of them that, that sent it because there were some very, very good names submitted. But unfortunately, I could not and, and I have got the agreement of these individuals to serve on the Downtown Development Authority. Of course, Wanda Roach and Cleveland Chambers are coming off and Lewis Klein is a, is a member up for reappointment. The nominations would be, for Wanda Roach is, or it doesn't matter which, which slot, they're all the same term, be four-year terms, which actually began July the first. So it'd be four years ending June 30th, four years from now. I would like to nominate Rod Drake, who lives in Great Sky area. He has agreed to, to participate and become a member. Earl Darby, Darby Funeral Home, and Corey Wilson with the Bank of North Georgia. Also, we have the, under the Historic Preservation Commission, I'd like just to reappoint those that are up, Stacy Yon and Bob Rugg. And these are three-year terms. So, because they hadn't been on there all that long and got the training and just getting started and everything. And one, one slot under the International Property Maintenance Code Board of Appeals, Jeremy, Jeremy Sexton, I'd like to reappoint Jeremy and that will be for a three-year term. He was the first one-year term, I think, that expired on that International Property Maintenance Code. So that, that's all that I have and I would offer these as nominees.
Do I need to approve? Do you need your motion second?
We have a motion. Mr. Grant, you make the motion?
Yes.
Motion and Mr. Yon seconded the motion. Any other questions or discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion. Thank you. And the last item of the, under Old Business is the Fields of Faith Sign Fee Waiver. We've done this about every year, but, you know, since we're waiving a fee, it needs to be done. And I think it's the right thing to do. Does anybody have any questions or anything on that? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Goodwin made the motion. Mr. Russ seconded it. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion. Thank you. Mr. Peppers?
I have two items tonight. One, I had sent you out a memo earlier this week about the Federal HIDA Task Force, which is in Atlanta, that we as a police agency participate in. We provide an officer that, that we pay the salary of and benefits of to travel into Atlanta. We pay for the vehicle for that individual. And then as part of his actions with that federal task force, if there are funds that are recovered based on seized assets and things like that, we receive a share back. And looking at the three-year history and our participation in the program, we're getting about $9,000 back a year. And, and what, what the police chief and his officers have, have looked at, his leadership has looked at, is withdrawing from HIDA. We're spending about $50,000 a year, a little bit more to be a part of the program. We're not really recouping those funds. And they would like the ability to pull that position back in house and, and, and convert it into a detective's position that could be used for special victim unit that I believe Chief Mitchell had mentioned during the budget process this past year. And we wanted to bring that to your attention. It's not something that we have to legally remove ourselves from, but it's a, it would be an administrative thing. So that's the direction that I would, I would prefer that the city move into. And so I wanted to bring that to your attention from that.
And we, we would vote, both vote on this at the next meeting?
We, we'll look into the agreement side as to what we might need. I don't know that we need any action on it. I think we would just be...
Oh, oh, okay. Okay, yeah, sounds, sounds logical to me.
This would just be a personnel movement within the department.
Yeah. Mr. Russ?
Billy, is one of the reasons why there's only about $9,000 a year is because drugs have no street value for us. I mean, we can't do anything with them except burn them and throw them away.
Well, I...
I mean, part of it, they recover drugs, I would assume.
Well, they, they do, but, but my particular issue in this is that we have an officer who's serving at the discretion of another agency, so to speak. And, you know, that officer's spending their time in DeKalb County and Clayton County. And, and we're already part of the drug task force here in Cherokee County with the other agencies here in Cherokee County. And that seems to have more of an impact for our citizens. I don't necessarily think it's our responsibility to pay for the manpower to deal with drug issues in other counties.
Well, I want to just thank you for doing that because sometimes there's a tendency for just keep doing something whether it's working or not. So I appreciate doing that.
How long we been, been doing that? How long we been in that organization?
Almost four years.
Four years? Okay.
So we spent $200,000, put it in perspective.
And brought in $36,000, roughly. Yeah. It's not a good investment, is it?
Well, that's not the, that's not the real reason why you do that, but there's, the other reasons don't make sense either, so...
We feel like we have better needs here locally that we can use that staff for.
Well, thank you for looking into it and doing that.
Okay.
The other item I have for you, I had also sent out an email to you earlier this week. We have had a chance to sit down with the construction company that got the bid for Whitted Mountain Trail. We received their construction schedule and had a, had a couple of concerns based on their start dates. We would like to have that project start, given the time we're at now, have them forced to a start date of October 1. That would give them the chance to go ahead and start mobilizing equipment and things like that from that date. And then that 90-day completion period for them would start October 1 and run basically right up until Christmas. And that's what their schedule's basically called for. But it, it signifies for both groups, we expect you to start on, at the first of October on the project. And then we'll notify all the property owners on Whitted Mountain Trail, get them a copy of the construction schedule as well as getting information to the Homeowners' Association so that we can keep that up to date for those residents that are going to be impacted as part of the project.
Do you need all the signatures for all the people that are impacted?
I, we, we had been waiting on one and I think it had come in shortly after. I, I don't think we had any outstanding signatures, no.
Did we ever determine the cause of the, the gas break? We know. That was somebody just screwed up and didn't do a locate properly?
No, well, yes. So we had the gas leak on Old Ball Ground. It, it was an unmarked Atlanta gas line. They had called in the locates like we do on all of our projects. They had identified their lines in the area. And this was a line that they weren't aware of, of their own. And so when we hit it...
Was it old or something?
Um, I, I couldn't tell you the age on it, but AGL did come out. They did make the repair. We're not responsible for any of the costs associated with that. The other issue that you're bringing up was the, was the sewer issue that we had along railroad tracks in the river. The line that's there is an older line. It's a four-inch line. And as the river has eroded part of the bank, it eroded the understructure of land in that line and it snapped it. We have filed all of our reports with EPD on that. We did get the line back together yesterday. And due to some force, pressure issues in line, we ended up with a blowout further down the line. And so it, like I said, it is an older line. So the fix that was put in, instead of, instead of continuing down that same path where we will have erosion issues along the river, they've cut it back 45 degrees and, and installed a new 300-foot line, same diameter as, as what we have now, but further back into the right of way so that we won't have as much issue with the erosions moving forward.
Is that, is that not on the opposite side of the river from the wastewater treatment plant?
It's on the same side of the river.
It's on the same side?
It is, it is. So it's, it's, it's on, it's between Sandy Hook, the Sandy Hook Shopping Center...
Yeah.
And the wastewater plant, along the railroad side of the river.
Okay, I got you, yeah.
Billy, when an issue like this comes up and you send Hattabian out and there's an issue of changing the pipe, moving something and spending money, at what point does, does he notify you when it's more than, more than...
We were notified immediately. The, we have a contingency to deal with issues like that within the fund. It's an emergency item and we would have to clean it up. What we looked at was the fact that if we go in there and we, we repaired the pipe and then we put in the rock to, that would be necessary to, to deal with the erosion issue along the river. It's hard to get to, first of all. And second of all, the amount of rock that we were going to need to shore up that side of the river was going to be substantially more expensive than just putting in a new line further back.
But, but it involved 300 feet of line. That, that just sounds like a lot. But, you know, I'm just wondering, at what point does Hattabian have to come to you and, and say, hey, we're going to spend a hundred grand here, you know?
It was, it was done immediately.
Yeah.
We received, the, the issue on the second blowout happened yesterday afternoon. They began troubleshooting, troubleshooting that portion of it. And then this morning, the determination was that it would be easier to go back further. And they'll be completed with a construction on that this afternoon and cleaning up tomorrow.
We just, we just spent our whole savings on that policeman we pulled back.
No, we didn't, we didn't.
Thank you, Billy. Thanks.
Anything else? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay. Anything else? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
There's no adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn. Thank you.